There we go.
Back in session, policies. Okay, so for the first seven that are up for a vote, and I hope everyone has familiarized themselves with it. Does anyone have, I would like to approve and accept as a chunk all seven of them unless someone has edits or comments or wants to make a change on one of them?
Well, I would, I would like to hear, because it looks like changes were made, so I'd like to just hear some of the discussion regarding them before doing that.
Okay. Do you, do you have a specific policy that you want to call out?
Well, the first one, homework, one of that was, I don't know if you want to start with that one, but that's, so maybe we would go just touch on each one.
So that one.
Yeah, that's not the first seven.
Right, the school handbook.
Oh wait, hold on, let me go back to the list, wait. So it's, it was ones to vote on.
Yeah, IKB homework.
Yeah, that's one of it, it is.
Yeah, but I didn't, I don't think we changed anything from the last.
No, not, well, we had, we had added, "School handbooks will contain a copy of the policy grade appropriate time elements."
Well, that's what I'm saying, just to talk about since our last, you know, meeting, if you could just highlight, because I didn't see highlights on them.
Oh.
Like the last, the last ones had like the, where you guys added and modified, so I didn't see that this time.
Yep, that's my fault, so.
But that's okay, I just would like to hear, like, how that, what, you know, because it didn't call it out as easy.
Mary, do you have, because I don't have it highlighted on mine either, can you?
It's the second paragraph, and we just added, "School handbooks will contain a copy of this policy, grade appropriate time allotments and other relevant information." We just added that.
Okay.
It is, it does vary age.
Wait, didn't we, didn't we alter the first paragraph too?
Yeah, I had some feedback, that's what I was thinking, because it was talking about like early education, or like, it was, the language that I had last time said something about, it, because it had some, hold on, let me go back to my notes from before, and this is why I was like, huh, it does look different, I mean, I was actually happy some of the language was taken out, but, let me go, hold on, so, homework, oh yeah, so it said something about sound educational practice, and that was, I think, taken out. Oh, and then there was some language about encouraging students to take upon themselves, school assigned responsibilities at home at an early age, I think that was.
Huh, I don't, I don't think my edits were saved.
It was, it was quite a while ago, yeah, I think we just simplified it.
Yeah, you did, and that's why, but it did look different from when I went back to my notes to what had, so I, but I didn't see the callouts. Anyway, so yeah, it looked like the ones that I had given feedback was, the opening passage sounded like, yeah.
No, I had, I had reworded that, and for some reason, those are not, let me look at version history.
No, that's fine, I just.
Well, no, because it's not the one that, that we wanted to put forth.
All right, so we don't, we can't vote on the one that's not the right one, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um. Brian?
Yeah?
So maybe we skip that one?
That's it.
I think this is the right one.
It is, okay, because I thought we got rid of the busy work statement.
I think that was feedback too about, I don't know.
Yeah, the rest of it is correct, but I thought that we.
That phrase meaning, I agree, I think we probably took out the end, and the phrase, "Not merely busy work."
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, all right, so.
Other than that, it looks like the corrections were made.
Yeah.
Because Natasha referenced them, and we did take a lot of those out.
So, now I have issues with it, how do we then word, because a problem in the past has been kindergarten teacher, teachers giving busy work to say that it is for skill development? So, how do we then make sure that's not happening? It's like, we're not just sending home piles of worksheets to kindergarten kids.
Well, that teacher's no longer with us, isn't?
Yes, she is no longer with us, but I want to make sure that doesn't happen going forward.
Is it objective?
Brian, would that be part of your regulation then?
That's more of a, a school based, I mean, if a principal saw a teacher giving busy work, which we're going to eliminate that word, and there was, you know, either they saw it and/or they got feedback from a parent saying, "This kind of feels like lots of busy work, it's not appropriate," then there would be some guidance given.
Would.
I mean, realistically, there's good reason not to give homework, period, in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade.
Yeah, that was one of my comments, but I figure we're not getting into that right now.
No, because I had shared that, because Sudbury had, Sudbury had something similar about like different grades, and maybe it would be easier just to add a sentence like, age or grade appropriate, or something.
Well, that's what we were trying to do with the handbooks, sorry.
Right, but maybe even to expand, oh, I see, grade appropriate time allotments, but maybe even saying grade appropriate, I think work is what.
Yeah, and that, that is going to be addressed in the handbooks. "School handbooks will contain a copy of this policy, grade appropriate time allotments and other relevant information." We aren't addressing the specifics in the policy.
So grade appropriate time allotments means for the homework, like the amount of time for each grade.
Exactly, because, because the policy is addressing the homework assignments, yeah. So with the "not merely busy work" taken out, and the sentence ends at "knowledge," are there any other concerns with this?
The only other question I had was about the religious holiday part, where it says, forget, no, you know, please refer to policy IMD, but then policy IMD, it, it just basically says to be sensitive, but you know, the general, you know, be sensitive to cultural practices and tolerance. I think what I was hoping, and I don't know if this is maybe something we would incorporate in our school calendar, just generally, because I know a lot of districts do something similar, they call out certain holidays that are, we're not, you know, recognize them as we're celebrating them, but that are significant maybe to community members, because I feel like there is sometimes, and you need to, I guess, I worry that teachers maybe aren't always firsthand knowledge of when certain holidays exist for different cultures to understand how, when to be sensitive about assigning homework or not, and I feel like I'm, we're missing that piece a little bit, like, where is that information for the tool to them to reference to be culturally sensitive relating to homework?
Brian?
So as opposed to having it in policy, I think it's a great point, and I think we as administrators and then at the building level, make sure that we share that information with teachers.
And that could be like IMD slash P, you know, for a procedural, or IMD slash A, it could be administrative, and like, these are, these are the.
I was just thinking this, the calendar, I mean, if we had, you know, pay, like, some of them are like, you know, you know, holidays commonly, you know, recognized, you know, and it could just be something.
We could just have a calendar that's just, these are the holidays, and that could be a cross-reference to this policy.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, anyway, I just wanted to, I just thought that was missing, so we were saying that we want them to be sensitive to, you know, certain things, but I just want to make sure that they, you know, if you're not practicing in any particular, you know, culture, you might not have firsthand awareness of when that falls necessarily, and I just think it's helped, you know, providing that tool, understanding how they have that information.
Yep.
Other than that, if we can solve that for another way, I, I think this is fine, we, you know.
Is it, is it getting too detailed to actually have it on our calendar, on the school calendar?
I wanted it on the school calendar.
You do?
Yeah, I had a couple of examples, that's why I thought maybe when we vote on it, we could maybe talk about that a little bit, you know, just.
Jeff, welcome.
So the question would be, is where would you stop?
Well, I had a couple of examples, so maybe that would be, you know, if we had, you know, nothing that we would want to reinvent the wheel, so looking at other districts is kind of where I, you know, they worded it in a way that I was like, okay, so it's just kind of like some of them more frequently, you know, so it doesn't have to be all, you know, encompassing, but ones that.
We referenced a lot of other districts.
Yeah.
Acton, Boxborough, Neshoba Regional. Things that.
Yeah, so some of their calendars do have that, their school calendars.
Mary, were you going to say something?
No, I was just going to say Hudson, we also looked at Hudson.
Yep, yep.
My one concern with the school calendar piece would then be, does it get confusing, like, do we have school on this day, or do we not, type of situation?
It was worded in a way, it was like a separate, like a second page, so it wasn't like necessarily on the calendar itself as like a, like a mark on the holiday, but it had like a list, so it didn't get confused with like, you're, you're off this day, or something like that, but it just called it out to, to recognize that these are some, you know, holidays that maybe, and it just had the dates for whatever they were that year, you know, so, and just listed them.
Brian, do you want to say something? He's muted.
I'm okay.
Oh, your hand, are you off the blinker on?
Oh yeah, I did leave my blinker, again, somebody turned it off for me.
Okay, anyway, so.
You're as good at using your blinker on the, on the road as you are in, in, in the meeting.
I have practiced more on the road.
Um, okay, so.
So make a motion, yeah, so I'll make a motion that we accept and approve policy IKB homework with edit to, oh, and now the wording is out, but.
Yeah, not merely busy work.
Yes, with that edit, not merely busy work, and this is actually amending and recodifying policy 607.
Correct. Do I have a second?
I can second.
All right, roll call, discussion? All right, roll call, vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay, one down, 12 to go, or 10 to go, or something. JIC, student discipline, okay, so yes, Jeff may want to speak to this, Jeff, I think it's highlighted in the version that you guys have.
Yep.
Students with disabilities, the second sort of chunk of this policy. Jeff added that, and then we also added, under legal references, individuals with disabilities in education act. Does anyone have any other questions about this?
Um, no, I appreciate, thank you for incorporating that information, Jeff, I feel like it was really helpful to clarify.
I just want to get that cross references to, sorry, you continuing, Natasha?
No, 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 I just, I saw that the cross reference was there, and as well, so, nope.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that, I just closed, I will make a motion that we approve policy JIC, student discipline, which will replace policy 550.
Do I have a second?
I can second.
All right, roll, discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, this is, I wasn't at the meeting where you discussed it, so I just need to have a few clarifying things.
Yep.
One is, did you guys already talk about like age level appropriate school discipline? Because I've heard conversation around like, it's not really appropriate to suspend a kid, a kindergartner per se, but maybe it is, and I don't know, education thinking on this, so if you think that that needs to stay in there, that's fine, it's up to you all to, but I just, that was something that had occurred to me, but if it didn't occur to anyone else, and we're all good with it, I can talk about it offline.
Where is this, or is it, is it something that you won't add it?
I'm not suggesting at this moment in time anything necessarily be added, I was just asking a question in relation to whether or not we, whether or not it's considered generally around age appropriateness of student discipline and.
I mean, so.
Kindergarteners being suspended for bad behavior.
Yeah, typically, that's not your first, a school's first response. Have I seen it done? Absolutely, every year, not a lot, I don't think it's common, but every now and then there is a student who just does, and it just may be, they're learning to regulate their behavior, but they've done something that does require them to be sent home for a day. It, it certainly, I would not say common, or a first re, or a first reaction, it's more about learning, but sometimes they may inadvertently even hurt another student. So I have seen it done every year.
Really sorry, I need to step away for one second, and we'll be right back. No worries.
So I wonder if, it sounds like the, what you're talking about, Beth Lynn, is more of, because this talks about, this talks about the, the spent, like the types of discipline, but I think what you're talking about is about what would trigger, like, evaluating what would then trigger a disciplinary moment that might be more age appropriate, right? The triggers leading up to discipline being imposed for a different, like, age appropriateness, is that what it sounds like, Beth Lynn, you're?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I've always thought of suspension as you, you did something knowingly wrong, and you need to go, you need to leave, and I just don't feel like when you're, I just don't, I think that's a, should be, like, it would be a very high bar for a kindergartner, I can see if, if it's different than that, like, and I honestly, I don't know the, the latest education thing, I almost didn't bring it up, but I can abstain from this vote, because I don't feel like I know enough about student discipline, I bring it up because I really, I feel, do feel strongly that it is kind of an issue of, it feels more like an old frame on thinking about how, about kids, and like, are you fitting into what we need you to do, and if you don't, then we're punishing you, like, that discipline of suspension occurs to me, and more like punishment for a kindergartner, it just doesn't feel like an appropriate thing, like, it's more like, we don't know what else to do with you, so go, go home. Then it feels like it's actually, and I know that's totally oversimplifying, I'm sure these are very complicated situations and cases, but they occurred more to me like they're probably special needs that students have, or special circumstances in family that would really fall more under like the, that they're not identified disability, but like, let's address it in a different way than suspension, but that's, I don't feel like we, if we don't need to address it here, we don't, and I can abstain.
Jessica, she's muted, Colleen.
And I apologize for making the meeting longer, but I, this one in particular.
No, sorry, had a little mini child emergency, so I, I agree, and I would like to see wording around when it is age appropriate, because I feel like you need to have a sense of self-advocacy and self-ownership in order to really benefit, because of the, what, I understand suspensions can be a means of safety for other students, but it's also a means of, I, I feel like there are other steps that can be taken at a, in that younger age bracket, unless I'm wrong, maybe there are circumstances where it is such a safety concern that a first grader needs to be removed in an emergency situation, so if that, that is the case, I could be swayed another way, so maybe I just need an example or a reasoning why it would ever be appropriate for a, a child under, you know, say, their third grader below, Green Meadow.
Brian?
So, I think you also have to, it, it's helpful to look at it from the parent of the child who's on the receiving end of whatever behavior, I mean, we could start to make up examples, there's lots of examples, where we might want to send a child home for the day, because they've, they stabbed their neighbor with a pencil or a pair of scissors, because they were angry. Now, would we suspend them for 10 days for fighting? Nope, but especially for a Green Meadow student and a younger child, but might we need to send them home for the day to separate them so that they could deregulate, we might have them work with the counselor, but we might call it a suspension, and I think we also have to look at it from the other side, so the parent whose kid got stabbed with the scissors, and then like, you didn't suspend my kid, the, the student who, you didn't do anything, you just talked to him? I mean, I get that they're only five or six, but my kid had to go get stitches.
Right.
So, and I think within the handbook, and to your point, I don't think this is common, that we end up suspending kindergartners or first graders, I think it's uncommon, quite frankly, but I think in a policy, it does belong there, because it, it's, it's going to happen.
There was a biter who was thrown out of my kid's preschool, who kept.
Okay.
Wouldn't stop, and finally, they just had to.
My son was suspended for a day for biting a student in second grade by Bernie.
Yeah. That really helps though, to, to, to make it make sense to me, in a bigger grand scheme of things, so.
What, when I used to, sorry, when I used to sub at Green Meadow, one time, the kids were all assembled on the floor, they were coming in, and the teacher had asked them to sit on the floor, because she was going to read them a story, and one kid had stopped to go to the bathroom, and he came in late, and just walked through the door and full-on kicked a kid in the face, like stomped his face on purpose, and like, you have to do something pretty, you have to come back strong in that instance, that kid needs to know that that is not okay, and it was horrible to watch, and the kid who got kicked was devastated, he hadn't done anything, you know, so it's, it's things like that, and then not only that, but like, you have to find out what instigated, instigated the behavior, so that you can hopefully try to set up some sort of parameters, or, or, or something to, to prevent it from happening again.
Is, is there a policy we could create that we could then reference if it is a child under a certain age? There are certain protocols or follow-up, like, do we have a counselor or some other, like, follow-up to this versus just a suspension and parents deal with it at home, because.
That would be a procedure thing, I think, Brian, Mary, what were you going to say?
I was just going to refer to one of the paragraphs, it talks about emergency removal, a principal may remove a student from school temporarily when a student is charged with a disciplinary offense, and the continued presence of the student poses a danger to persons, so it's saying, this is the extraordinary case, and there's no alternative available to alleviate the danger or disruption, to me, that speaks to what the concern is here, this is like a last resort, especially with the younger kids, but if that works for you guys.
And to your point, I think procedurally, the principal would set up the conversation with the guidance council, especially for the younger students, and really, all, depending on what the situation is, all the way up, that's a pretty common practice, so it, I, and we could make sure that that's in the procedure.
Yeah, hopeful, hopefully, so in the past, and I will say that the principal was reticent to even document the occasion, and so that has been a history in, in our schools, and I think that's why people are feeling particularly sensitive, because not only was it not documented, it wasn't reported, and, and the parent wasn't even told, and it was everything I could do to keep my mouth shut and not tell the parent what had happened.
Yeah, that was another comment I had, but.
Just, I have my hand patiently. Just want to try to say, I'm trying to follow some protocol here.
Do it, do it, do it, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, and Beth Lynn, you do, I think you and Jessica raised some valid points here, because I am quite aware of discipline issues that can happen and do happen at Green Meadow, and how they are or not, and I could tell you, kids up until first grade are suspended, and not with one-off or two-off, and so I would say, and I, I know I mentioned about Framingham's policy, there is language in Framingham that I previously had thought was helpful, I didn't see it added here, but it says relevant factors in making disciplined decisions, and it kind of had some bullet points about when choosing consequences, just some general things, age, health, special education status, student academic program, prior conduct, you know, so just a couple of like things that don't limit necessarily the principal's authority to act, but obviously, as a policy for the school committee, that we want to make sure that are, you know, and I'm sure they are being, but I think it thoughtfully written might be helpful to incorporate, impact of incident on, on overall school community, serious, seriousness of the harm and degree, you know, some of those things that may be, because they emerge, there is emergency suspension, and then there's suspensions by itself as well, so emergency removal is different than a punitive ongoing suspension, and both of those have happened for kids at Green Meadow, even in the younger grades, and I think sometimes it is kids who sometimes are not recognized, this is where we're, we're getting better as a district, but maybe have not gotten adequate supports, or have been recognized, and you know, it's just a lot of, you know, the younger grades, that's when you're still doing a lot of discovery on things, when they become dysregulated, and you're not knowing yet what they are, so I, I would be comfortable to, if we could add a little bit more language that supports that age appropriateness, because I think certain communities or certain populations of kids, if we look at Maynard's discipline record disproportionately, we'll see that it is kids who are special education and minority, not intentional, of course, but that just seems to be the demographic that, and it's not unique to Maynard, it, it does happen, you know, around, around the state and many districts, so if we're thinking about equity and all of those things, I think it's important to think about how we're applying discipline with, with, through that lens. I'm glad the special education pieces have been applied there, but I think, I don't even know if, you know, equity, we didn't really talk about that, but we're doing a policy and discipline, are there any of those factors that, you know, and I think this relevant fact, the relevant factors, like a student status, you know, overall, you know, I think those are things we just, we do need to think about, like, you know, beyond the degree, aside from just emergency removal, we're talking about, you know, more than, more than what that was, and that's not necessarily just at Green Meadow, you know. Anyway, so that, 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 to the relevant factors, and are the section, Lydia, on the Framingham policy.
Yeah, I still have your, your call-outs for that, I have all your notes for that, yeah, Mary?
I also had a note that we were going to put those in procedures, that was the note from the last.
Oh, okay.
That we were going to put that in procedures.
Well, it's not a procedure, it's not telling them how to, to define, it's just saying factors that, in the policy that we, you know, that we would like as a, as a committee to be considered generally, how they apply or how they're executed, that's the procedure, and that's where the principal would use their authority or whatever to, you know, we're not saying how many days or how much, we're just saying these are the factors that we feel as a district need to be considered when applying discipline.
Okay, I see your point.
I, I do appreciate the discussion about it, I, I think, I like that, I think the term suspension just carries with it a certain connotation, so I like being able to have, I appreciate emergency removal, I appreciate there are circumstances in which you've tried whatever you can try, and then you still that child, for whatever reason, they, they need to be removed for that, that time, recognizing then that there, the follow-up and consideration around that for that child and their context in moving forward, so.
Okay, so here's my proposal, we table this, so there's a motion on the table.
I will withdraw, I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, and we will revisit this, yes, can I help you? Wow, no, I'm in, yeah.
Love it, I thought he was offering you dinner.
He was, he was, he was offering to bring me dinner, I'm not going to sit here and eat and run a meeting at the same time, that's not fair.
That was a nice gesture.
Yes, it was, yes, okay, Mary, you're too nice to him, seriously, you like.
He tries.
So we will revisit JIC. Next is JJIB, do. Do we have any concerns or questions about that?
Let me pull it up again. I don't have any notes on that one. I don't think I did. K I B. And that was the one that you were gonna circle back with Brian, is that right?
Yes, and so you had asked.
Let me go back.
You had asked about. Unified including.
Oh, yes, here we go.
And because unified is not interscholastic. It's a club thing. It's not an interest. It's technically not an interscholastic. It doesn't even. Covered by this policy. So.
So we are only saying that this is M I A A.
Yeah.
We would not want to have a policy that also includes any sports that. That the district sponsors.
Well, that's a question. That's something that we can look into it at a future meeting.
Okay.
And I will make note of that. Once I find my sticky pad.
And I think, let me see. Subject to the funding.
We can only make policies over things that are regarding things that are within our jurisdiction.
Well, if something is a sports is happening on campus and it's sponsored, I think that is within our.
Yes, but it is not covered in the interscholastic. I mean, it wouldn't it wouldn't be, yeah. So we can. We can, we will revisit, we will talk about that separately. Are there any other comments or questions about J J I B as it is written?
I'm looking, I think there was one other feedback that I had about. Let's see.
Yeah, students will be allowed to participate in individual sports on the basis of their abilities and desire. That out. Right. We just right out.
Okay.
Gone.
Because it's handled again in the in the in the student handbooks.
Yeah.
Okay, because that's what I was I was looking for because I know that you see you took the sentence out altogether.
Took it out. It is gone.
Yep.
Can I ask, I don't know if I thought it would need to be taken out. Can I ask the reasoning on?
Yeah, the reasoning was is. Because it was sort of non, it wasn't necessary. It's, I mean, of course, students will participate. I mean, you don't make varsity unless you're skilled enough to make varsity. You don't, you know.
So I think I was thinking more, it was, I thought it was important from an accommodation perspective where. For instance, I'm gonna just, if you have a kid who's, I don't know. Has hearing impairment, you know, and using more visual, you know, lights or something that might need, you know, maybe their athletic skills are. You know, able to do certain things like for track. You know, but maybe instead of a horn, they might need visual cues to. You know, to help. So that's what I was like, they may athletically meet the to make the team, but they might need support to be it for their abilities to.
So there's a whole factor because what if we have a child in or a student in a wheelchair who wants to play basketball? I mean, so I think that like. Not saying that they shouldn't, but I'm just saying like, how how much responsibility does the district have? Because that could become quite costly. And I would like Jeff to weigh in if he wants to, even though it's after your bedtime. Colleen, he's muted.
What exactly is the question you'd like me to weigh in on?
Natasha?
So the there was a sentence in there included in the policy before that indicated, hold on, I just. Maybe Lydia, you can, oh, students will be allowed to participate in individual sports on the basis of their abilities and desires.
So you know, Jeff was in the meeting when we discussed this.
Yeah, okay. And and so that was taken out and my my question was, I thought that. It might be an important consideration where if a student, because in the, you know, someone tries out for a sport. But maybe they might be like, you know, have a hearing impairment where a visual cue to participate. Might, you know, may might need some minor accommodation. To be allowed to participate. I think that indicating that they will be allowed to participate. On the basis of their abilities would be important to. Clarify there and not remove because I think at some level we are required to accommodate for. Sport, some sporting, I don't know exactly at what level we would, we would explicitly say no, because, you know, Lydia's example about someone in a wheelchair, I'm not sure that is the extent, but.
Well, I believe it's in another policy under extracurricular activities. That some of that wording does show up.
Let me look.
Students being able to participate in extracurricular.
So maybe that's a cross reference.
Yes. So yes, and we're getting to that policy. And Jeff added, each school will provide equal opportunity to students with disabilities to participate in extracurricular activities. So.
Maybe that's it. We would, if we're saying that. The abilities are being recognized in extracurricular and then maybe we we cross reference that on this one.
I can do that.
Does that sound, that would be fine with me. I just.
But um, that's extracurricular. Does that, I guess that falls under interscholastic. Okay, Brian, does that?
Yeah, I think if we cross reference that, that's fine.
All right, so I will add a cross reference. Add J J.
Thank you.
Yep, sure. So with that. With that addition, any other? Concerns?
I'll make a motion that we approve. J J I B interclass to interscholastic athletics to replace dated policy. Five sixty four with edit to cross reference. What is it? J?
J J.
J J.
Yep.
A second.
All right, discussion. No, okay, we've have, let's see, let's go backwards. Natasha?
Yes.
Uh, Bethland?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes. Lydia, yes, okay, excellent, thank you. And Colleen, I will edit that before I put it in your folder. J K, student conduct. This was adopted in one thirty, January thirtieth of twenty twenty, when we adopted like the whole mass. Bulk of mask policies. It is not being replaced or is not replacing anything. It has been approved and reviewed by Brian B. And. Wait, what am I doing? Nope, sorry, reading the wrong one. Has been reviewed and approved by Jeff. And the edits are in orange.
The only feedback I had from last time was just citing the J K, right? We're looking at J K?
Yeah.
Okay. So was citing, I know we had the bus policy, the conduct. And the maybe as a cross reference. Because that was recently approved by us also.
Yep.
And I thought maybe it would be helpful to.
There is a separate conduct policy for the bus specifically. I'm not. Sure if it creates a. A problem if we cross reference it or not. Let me look.
Well, I guess maybe the bus policy should cross reference this one. I don't know if that's the better. Way to to think about it because that's. I just remember doing separate. I just thought at some point, maybe one of them should cite the other. Because he says the purpose of disciplinary action is to restore acceptable behavior, you know, and again, I just talked about the conduct and I just. Feel like they're very similar. They shouldn't be kind of in their own silos in in many ways. It arises and. No worries. I mean, it's not hugely, the the language on it's fine. So it was just. I think just going back at my notes, that was the feedback. Previously.
Now I'm not. Finding it in my.
Or or did, oh, I think.
Yeah, so E E A E C. Is also J I C C. So. The school committee and the district staff share with students and parents slash guardians the responsibility for student safety during transportation to and from school. The authority for enforcing school committee requirements of student conduct on buses will rest with the principal. All students who ride on any school bus or van are expected to follow any local, state and or federal health. And safety protocols in effect to ensure the safety of all students who ride in buses, it may occasionally be necessary to revoke the privilege. Of transportation from a student who abuses this privilege. Parents slash guardians of children whose behavior and misconduct on school buses. Endangers the health, safety and welfare of other riders will be notified that their children face the loss of transportation privileges. In accordance with the student school handbook. So this isn't basically like. Student conduct, this is. J K talks about, okay, this is. We will address disciplinary issues. And these are the people who are in charge of doing that. I think. Student conduct on buses is just more specific. It states specifically what will happen in regards to school buses. So I think that. That if we're going to reference anything, we should reference J K on E E A E C.
What about the the discipline one?
Jade.
That we retabled. I know we're not approving it, but would we want to, because this references discipline, acceptable hit behavior when disciplinary action. Would we, when we would want to cite that in this when we approve it? So would this make sense to table this until we approve that one? Because. That's specific to discipline and how discipline will be applied.
And by reference, to say that it's listed in the respective student handbooks, that doesn't do it, huh? Because it is.
No, because you're citing what you're, so when you talk about discipline, you're referencing how, then it cites the policy about discipline. And what the handbook won't outline, I guess, the the deep, it doesn't sound like that's going to outline the. That the policy is where it has the the levels of like discipline and how that's applied, you know. Suspension or whatever it is.
Yeah, I thought that's why we said we were going to put it in the student handbooks because it's age appropriate. You're going to treat a kindergarten that is, you know, having issues on the bus differently than a junior in high school. So I thought that's why we were doing it that way.
Not that makes sense to me, but. I'm not the one that had the comment, so.
I think Mary is right. That was our conversation at the subcommittee level. So that they could be specific for sort of going back to our earlier conversation.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I just realized that maybe it's because I'm not seeing the handbook, I'm not actually understanding of how that's like clarified there. So maybe that's what it is, that just not.
We will be, we will be reviewing those next.
Right, okay.
So maybe what we'll do is we can reference J K at the end of the student handbooks.
Yeah.
Have it, you know, coordinate that way.
Jeff has something to say, Colleen.
Oh, go, Jeff. He's muted.
It, I'm thinking back, Beth, on what you said as far as, you know, the age level, especially with the little kids. That it almost feels like some of that wording could go into here when it talks about. The discipline should be administered with fairness and shall relate to the individual needs. Maybe individual circumstances, including. The age of the child. And for some reason, it's sticking in my head that that would kind of fit here somewhere. But then again, if we're cross referencing something else that already has that wording, we wouldn't need to. But uh. That's just what. It just seemed like it might fit a little bit there. But then again, handbooks does clarify, you know, remodel handbooks for the little ones too.
Do we want to table this along with? J I C and review them together?
Well, we can take another look at them.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so table.
For me, I think the distinction, Jeff, what you're saying, like the distinction with the policy versus what's the procedure is. What do you want to make sure is clear and kind of what our overarching philosophy and how we approach everything is and like what we're. How we're making sure there's equity within that. And so I think including something overarching like age, for instance, in that. Policy would be the place because if I were a parent, then. Just to, for the sake of articulating, these are our guiding principles. This is what we follow in the case in consideration of policy. So I guess that would be the distinction between that and then. It's articulated and it's operationalized in the context of the handbook, but. And I think it could be pretty elegant, like you're saying, just something simple, maybe would would do it.
All right. So Jen, do we need to make a motion to table or can I just say it's tabled? Tabled.
It's only us. We don't have an audience, so you can just table it.
Well, but we're recorded.
We're recorded.
Yeah.
Recorded, I forgot about that.
Remind myself, we're being recorded.
You are being recorded.
Um, all right, J L, student welfare.
Cried.
It basically has not changed since you guys first. Looked at it. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept J L's student welfare. It replaces the previous school committee policy six thirty seven.
Okay, and.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, the only. And I know this is a new position this year.
Okay.
The director of building, I think the last feedback was about the inspection of the playground.
And he is not certified to do that.
The principal is?
The, no, the principal and the director of building, what you call it, is they aren't certified. We would have to, we have to hire someone to come and who's certified to come and inspect.
But it says it in our policy. It says a periodic inspection of school playground. Fields by playground and playground fields by principal of the school. So I was thinking that that would be with the director of bill, but you're. But you're saying he's not certified, but I'm curious now with the principal.
No, but the principal would just accompany them. Brian?
And I think that they also. Review, if you will, the the playgrounds and the. Structures to make sure they don't see anything, but you're right, in terms of an actual annual report, it's a separate company that we hire that comes in. And they test, for example, though, measure the depth of the. Mulch at the bottom. mulch at the bottom of the slide, so they do all that sort of technical stuff.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about that part. I was just thinking about when the principal walks around, does their thing, that they would be kind of, we would expect them to be company with the the building person. So if there's a need, I know like in the past, at Green Meadow, like they've had I don't know, gra- grass, glass underneath, you know, whatever. And and sometimes it's been like the information, you know, we didn't have that role there, so the information wasn't always communicated to the right folks. So now that we have that that new role, I would just want to make sure that 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 connection is made. If that's the responsibility, the director, you know, building operations, that 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 they're taking that pass off of information from the principal for that ownership. Because we don't have like the fence behind, you know, if there's things that, it helps inform also capital, you know, planning, you know, that kind of thing. If there's a need. Just think that the, maybe the principal alone might not be only the best one, or maybe we can just say, I don't know, even change it and just whatever the leader is. That's that's where I was, that was my intent. Not that they would be doing the official inspection. I was just more accompanying the principal along with their, you know, yep, everything looks good today, or whatever, however that frequency is.
Brian?
Oh, I was just, I thought the phrasing by the principal of the school and others, I would think the director of building operations is included in the and others. I mean, in our case, it could even be Justin DeMarco, who is not even an employee. So I thought that was covered within and others. But we could specifically list the director of building operations now that we have one.
Or just maybe a facilities person, you know, so it doesn't need to be so granular, but as long as it's someone with knowledge of like facility that can help with, you know, I guess that was, that was what I was thinking. Whether that's the director of building operations, whether that's Justin DeMarco, but it's someone with a little bit more understanding of action items or how to address something, if it's something is found or, you know, noticed.
Well, principals know how to use school dude.
Totally do.
And I don't know, I know that I would think that that's what we would want them to do, right?
Okay, so what are we doing here? Do people feel strongly one way or the other?
Can we vote? And then if we don't have the votes, we table it?
Well, or or we just add uh, inspection of the school's playground and playing fields by the principal and director of building management.
I would just hate for that to be a then on the opposite, an excuse, oh, I couldn't inspect because the builder director of billing op wasn't available, so it gets pushed or, and like you mentioned, I think it's more the responsibility of the principal and then a follow-up in school dude or reaching out should something be identified. Personally, but
Do they have?
Anything that should be a a red, like, for example, we had the arm breaker at Green Meadow. My kid broke her wrist on it, like five kids broke their wrist on it. The the slidey, there was like that one thing that they ended up taking down because so many kids broke their arms on it. So like, that's something, it, the building principal is going to be in tune, too, because you're going to start to see two, three kids in the nurse's office crying about it. So I don't want them to have to wait, go out there and inspect it, or decide to take it down because director of building, I mean, this was years and years ago, but, and they, I would assume the principal is more is responsible for knowing actual, like, it's not N A E Y C for elementary, but whatever the safety codes and guidelines are for for elementary and whatnot, more so than a overall facilities director, who's a more of a building management position than a child safety officer, but.
Brian, you have your hand up.
He left his blinker on.
Blinker on again.
I did leave it on, but I will say, I think the language were, as it stated, does work.
Okay.
I mean, why do we have a facilities manager or whatever he is? If it's not, he's not going to be there for immediate reasons.
That's what I was kind of like, I I want, but, you know, I hope that the principal would not have to be waiting very long to get, you know, someone to to do that. I I know from just being on the Green Meadow School Council for years, there was hesitation from the principal to do in-building inspection, like to go look and see, because they're like, I don't have that expertise. And that was feedback that had been shared before about when you're looking at what the custodians were doing and and whatnot. So that's why now that we have that role is why I just wanted to I don't want that to be the backfall, like, oh, there's a role there. The principal should be able to engage that person pretty easily and not have to wait very long. And that, that's kind of what it was. I don't want that to be like, oh, I don't have the expertise. How would I know if that, you know, needs to take action on or not, or how would I know it looks right or not?
Like Brian, I think it speaks, it, you know, it says what it's supposed to.
I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I thought, well, we didn't do this one, right? Okay, I'll make, didn't I already do this?
We already did the motion.
And we had our discussion, so roll call, vote. Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera?
I will abstain.
Okay, Lydia Clancy, yes, excellent. E C A dash one, video surveillance.
Excuse me, I do not see that we did a motion on this one.
With a motion on on?
No.
I didn't think we had.
No motion.
Okey dokey.
Okay.
Let's go back.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept J L student welfare replaces mained school committee policy six thirty seven. I could swear I did that before, but.
I will second.
All right, thank you. Roll call. Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yeah.
Houlihan?
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera?
I'm staying.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay, now. E C A dash one, video surveillance and electronic monitoring. This was school committee policy two eleven. Nothing has been changed. I don't believe.
Here, I just wanted to, I thought that we
Oh, yes, we took off, we took out on the first purpose right after, throughout the district first sentence, it said, and on school buses. We took out and on school buses because we do not have cameras on school buses.
And there were also a couple of other places that we were going to take it out for the same reason. It refers to it like the seventh line down. It says, and in school buses.
What number is this again? Sorry, is J?
This is number two eleven.
Oh, is E C, E C A one, right?
A, yeah, dash one.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, Mary, where else does it say?
Deploy, sorry, I was going to send this to you early. I think we just missed it. Deployment, the second paragraph, it's like two, four, six, eight, nine, ninth line down. It also refers to and in school buses.
Oh, shoot, okay, so that'll go.
And then public notice of video policy. Again, it said, including school buses. And then the fourth line down, it said, and on buses. So we just missed a couple of places.
Well, it sounds like I missed most of them.
Oh, and then the lot, oh, then, yeah, second. Sorry, the second to last paragraph, it's just cleaning it up because it's the same thing, because we just don't have any jurisdiction is basically.
Exactly.
Second to last paragraph, so it's page three, second to last paragraph. It says a superintendent is
School buses.
Yeah, so exact same language, we just missed a couple of places.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just had a question about, and I didn't see it explicitly written in here, but it just says video surveillance, but when it goes slash electronic monitoring, we're not, it's no audio, right?
Yeah, we just put ankle bracelets on all the students.
So I think what I'm just want to make sure is, I just want to make sure that what we're talking about here is not incorporating audio surveillance or audio monitoring in anything, right? Because I know that we have like certain consent laws in Massachusetts and I just it didn't really say that, but when it's talked about electronic monitoring, I just
Yeah, no, there's, there's no audio to our video.
Audio to our video.
Video killed the radio star.
So, so should, are you gonna edit this and then re-propose it, or is it just?
Well, no, it's just taking out and in school buses, like in seven different places. But yes, we can. I mean, this is a first re- technically a first reading since uh, I think.
Yeah, because I don't think we did this one last time they got tabled.
I I just put it up for a vote because we've had it forever and we didn't really change anything except take out on school buses.
So what, I'm sorry, I should be following better. So why aren't, why wouldn't we take it up for a vote? Why would we table it?
To make sure that I take out all of the on school buses sentences.
We note that, by the way, there is this fancy function and word where you can find the word bus.
Oh, yeah, you could just do find, you could just do find and.
But that being said, if we say with the elimination of all
Is it all reference?
References to bus, then we could do it.
The monitoring on buses, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Works, works for me. I make a motion that we approve E C A dash one, video surveillance and electronic monitoring, formerly policy two one one with edits to remove reference to monitoring on buses throughout policy.
I will second that. Oh, Mary will, too.
Right.
Okay, uh, roll call, Natasha?
Yes.
Beth Lynn? Jessica?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lydia, yes, okay, excellent. And J I E, pregnant students. I made one change that you may not have seen since, uh, since we last, or since I posted it last week. Jessica suggested that we add I H B F homebound instruction as a cross-reference due to due to the fact that, you know, there will be postpartum recovery time and whatnot. So I thought that that was a great suggestion. And then the other change that you'll see that was made is before it said pregnant students will be permitted. So anytime it said permitted, we changed it to strongly encouraged.
Yeah, I like that a lot.
I have a question. Is this, this is essentially ends up being for it's, it's, because the way it's worded, it's pregnant pregnant students. Because I, it then talked about pregnancy and parenting, and or take on, and or take on parenting responsibilities, so but the the title is pregnant students, so never mind. I was thinking about fathers, too, and trying to be equitable and thinking about their, them trying to help take care of a newborn child. As opposed to assuming that it was just going to be the pregnant woman.
Yeah, no, this is, this, I think, is just pregnancy and immediately after.
And just for reference, I'm curious what happens in that situation, Brian, where you have a male student who becomes a father in in high school, or, you know, would that be something that they would get time to leave, like if there's, you know, to help care for the child, or how how might that work out if they're not the actual child bearer, but how does that, is this only addressing the absence of schooling? They'd have to kind of like make it work, or?
No, this isn't about rearing the child. This isn't about missing school or or having instruction while you're rearing the child. This is just, we encourage you to remain, because a lot of times pregnant girls would feel embarrassed, or they wouldn't, they wouldn't want to come to school. Or I know that way back, they were actually dismissed from school when they became pregnant. So
This is just during the the actual pregnancy itself?
Correct, yeah. We have no say in what they do in terms of childcare, or, you know, I mean, we, we, I don't think the school district can make accommodations for, because
Well, I I think it just, I never, when Jessica went, the the cross-reference to homebound instruction, which I thought is very helpful, it just got to trigger that thought, like, okay, so, you know, what if that you know, parent may need to, you know, be at home, but we're saying more who may be home.
Part, I'm like, say you had a cesarean.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Infection and you have to be on
All right, we, I don't need, we don't need to go into all detail about the cesarean causes.
Or prolapse uterus.
Yeah, 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 we're recorded, we're recorded, we're recorded.
Natural things that can happen.
Exactly. Yeah.
So, okay, so when you say and or take on parenting responsibilities, I'm just trying to understand that part, then. School committee wishes to preserve educational opportunities for those students who may become pregnant and or take on parenting responsibilities. So is the, I'm just trying to
Well, so that's the accommodation for the father, right? Take on parenting, it's, yeah, I guess I don't, I don't know why that's in there, because
Well, it seems like it should be one or the other, maybe, if we're talking about the student, pregnant student, or
I think it should stop at who become pregnant.
But I don't want to be restrictive either, if if we're
Well, the second paragraph pretty much outlined. So maybe to take out or taking on parent, parenting responsibilities. Because a pregnant, you know, the second paragraph goes through the whole cycle.
Yeah, it seems like it's pretty clear in the second paragraph. It's about like immediately following birth and like if you're, if you need to be there to take care of your child, like if
Well, we could take out the slash or, so who may become pregnant and take on, because just because they get pregnant doesn't mean that they're necessarily, or no. Yeah, I don't know, because the or makes it sound like they might take on parenting responsibilities without having been pregnant. But what high schooler adopts a child?
Well, if a parent passed away and you gain, I mean, you were going down this rabbit hole. Of your, your sister, you know.
The title is pregnant students.
So I think this is the medical
We either amend amend the title to, if we want it to be more inclusive, or we hone the scope more to only
Why don't we hone the scope so that it's just pregnant students and then we can do a sub policy that is more inclusive? So I'm
Take out the and or take on parenting responsibilities.
Yeah.
Well, um, I don't think that, no, because if they don't keep the baby, then they don't need to be pregnant and take on parenting responsibility. You can just be pregnant and then
Right, that's why we took it out.
Oh, I thought she was just going to take out the the or
Just dealing with pregnancy and the postpartum, initial postpartum.
So who may become pregnant, period.
Right. So we're gonna have to create a breastfeeding closet at the high school?
Or problem.
Pumping station?
Condoms in the bathroom.
So I'll make a motion that we approve policy J I E, pregnant students, which amends and re-cutifies policy six forty five with the edit to remove after the first sentence and slash or take on parenting responsibilities.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, roll call. Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Beth Lynn?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Lydia, yes. Alrighty, we made it through the approvals. Now, I want to be mindful of the fact that it's down nine thirty nine. So our meeting was originally scheduled to go till ten. I K F, J J, J L C, J R A. All our first readings. We can, if you want postpone these first readings, if you want to just enter into executive session now.
Is there any one particular I'd like to hear that is more pressing or time sensitive, like the graduation requirements, or are they all kind of?
Graduation requirements is basic Graduation requirements is basically the same, it's not going to affect this year's class. We just included things like the civics project, um, we included the world language requirement. And the math requirement went from three years to four years with the caveat that one year could be computer science with the approval of the principal. So um.
Do we want to approve J J, which is the one that I know Jeff gave commentary to, um, because that's the one with the co-curricular.
If you guys are, if you guys are comfortable with it.
I don't know if that, since we have Jeff's ear here, um, I maybe to. Before he turns into a pumpkin too.
All right, I'm just letting my dog in because she's barking at the door.
Okay, so maybe we start with just any ones that he's given feedback on and I want to just utilize his presence here as much as possible.
So that, yeah, feedback on just about all of them.
I know, yeah, so the.
That's awesome, Jeff, thank you.
Yeah, he he, um, Jeff gave feedback on J J, the bottom where it's highlighted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's what we were talking about before, about the extracurricular for the.
Mm hmm.
So can I make a motion that we?
You can.
Accept J J co-curricular and extracurricular activities, which replaces number five sixty two policies?
A second?
Discussion? No, all right, Natasha.
Do we want to cross reference the other policy that we just? Or no?
Well, I think the other policy should be cross referenced with this.
Okay, I just saw M I A A regulations on here, which were in, it just got me thinking because that's more into the intercalistic, you know? Right? So I don't know how much we're cross referencing here, um, because that.
We can cross reference as much as anybody wants to.
Oh, it's J J I B, right?
Yeah, I've got J J I B, so uh.
I may amend my motion to say we're going to cross reference to J J I B.
Uh, well, J J I B is already, we, we voted to approve it with the caveat that we added a cross reference of J J extracurricular. I don't know that we need to. Cross reference J J I B on J J, but because this is co-curricular and extracurricular, which isn't necessarily. Interscholastic sports, it's like clubs, it's, you know.
So what is the M I A A regulation? That's where I got confused then.
That I apparently, well, because there are some sport activities.
That fall under extracurriculars.
Right.
I think they all do, right? They all kind of fall under extracurricular, right? Basketball, football, all that's extracurricular.
Right, it's just, it's a, you know.
Does it hurt to cross, cross, reference?
It doesn't, let's do it. J J I B.
I made my motion to cross reference to J J I B.
Okey dokey.
I'll second.
And discussion.
That was it.
All right, Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yes.
Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Nice, okay, all right, I I.
Lydia Clancy?
Oh, Lydia Clancy, yep.
Did you vote on all the other ones?
So, okay, so I'm going to uh propose that we table.
Yeah.
The last three, so that we can enter into executive session. Do I need a vote on that, Jen? To table it or do I?
No.
No. Tabled. Um. Now, before we enter into executive session. Oh, no. Um, I need to read the thinger.
The thinger.
The thinger, you know, that says that we're entering into executive session and the the reason. And I need to find it.
Oh, here's the agenda, hold on, oh.
Oh, for crying out loud. Too many papers.
Give me, give me to read it? I have it handy.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so we will now enter into executive session under M G L, chapter thirty A, section twenty one. A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the M E A teachers' unions, it's an open meeting. Would have a dental mental effect on the bargaining of the public body and the chair, so declares, chair, do you declare?
I do declare.
School committee will not uh, will not return to open session.
Correct.
And then roll call vote.
So roll call vote to adjourn into uh executive session. Jeff, are you saying goodbye? Bye bye.
Bye, Jeff, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Mary Brannely?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yep.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay, let's go.
And we are in executive session, right? We just need to stop recording?
Can we just stop recording?
And like lock them.